I don't want to be gerrymandered out of my house and I say that very vocally because what that means is we would end up with these high raises that don't make sense to us here in Murray. And I believe and I know for a fact, you know, the legislature is about to put that down our throats whether we want it to or not. So why can't we work together? Why can't we work with administration? Why can't we find common ground to what that growth looks like? I live in a historical home as well and it's a huge feat to keep up these homes. And why can't we look at programs like Neighbor Works or other organizations to really help us preserve what we have and continue to preserve what is there? I think what I've realized is there wasn't a lot of support for landlords to upkeep. And I think that's unfortunate. I think we need to continue those conversations. And there's so much more that I've seen now with the lens of being in this role that I think we really should lean into working together, as we all collectively say, but really just find ways in doing that for all generations and not just what's to come or who's been here the longest. I think ultimately, we all love Murray. We are the heart of the county and we have such a great opportunity to do something great and to have something great. And it's literally in my backyard and there's nobody more invested than me.
All right. All right. Well, that's all the introductions. Good job, everybody. Before we move on, I would also like to thank Jen Kiko Lynn and K Real Estate. We are broadcasting from the K Real Estate World Broadcast Headquarters on the 43rd 4 of the K Real Estate Towers overlooking the Wasatch Range. So we appreciate, you know, this whole setup and stuff and including that groovy Murray marquee that's back there. So with that said, we have a few starter questions that are pretty much germane to the historic foundation. And I haven't told him he's going to have to do this yet, but since he's the president, Brandon's going to read the first one and we're going to go around the horn again, how we did it just now. Keep your maximum 60 seconds because we don't want to lose our massive viewership right now and just keep it moving. So Paul Pickett, you are on deck with question one, which we will give to Brandon.
Okay. All right. So the first question is, what is your vision for the future preservation of historic buildings in our city?
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. I bet you didn't see that one coming, right?
What was that?
I said, I bet you didn't see that one coming, right?
I would never expect that question from you guys. I just saw. No, Murray's got some great buildings that when Rachel and I met a couple of weeks ago and she walked through those buildings, I was really surprised that more buildings than I thought they were. And my vision for them is that the history needs to be preserved. And this history, once you tear it down, you can't replace it. And the people from Murray have a deep love and root for this area. There are a lot of memories that go along with these buildings. And our purpose is to make sure that these buildings are preserved and honored so that people learn about our past and our heritage.
All right. Thank you very much. And we'll move to David Rogers. I mean, with your background in city planning, historical building restoration is kind of a big deal. So what do you think?
Yeah, thank you so much, Jeff and Brandon for asking that question. Historic preservation is a huge deal, something that I've learned being a planner is that it's so important to take our history into account. Something that's so cool about Murray that other places in this valley just don't have is that history. Murray built up itself. Murray had its own identity. Murray was here before the valley began to sprawl in the way that it has. And so Murray's got State Street being historic. We've got that district around there. And I would love to see as much of that preserved as we can moving forward. The previous council member in this area, Phil Markham, talked to the council a few weeks ago about making a historic promenade sort of area, a walkable area by the new city hall that includes the Townsend House and the Mirror Museum, places like that. And I thought that was an excellent idea and something that I think our residents would absolutely love. But I really want to build on the history that Murray has here, preserve that culture, that identity that Murray has always had, and build on that as we expand our city and as we welcome people to our city and as we grow together as one Murray.
All right. That almost sounded well rehearsed. That was pretty cool. Good job. All right. Let's roll into District Three. I know Clark, this is like a big deal to you. I've seen you in city council meetings preaching on this topic. So what are your thoughts?
Thanks, Jeff. If you've ever been in a historic, well, I know you've all been in a historic building before. You can tell that there are stories in the walls, that there's character and soul in that building. People naturally want to spend time in historic buildings. They gravitate towards those areas. Think of all the destination cities that you go to around the valley or in the state. They are generally historic downtowns, areas where you want to go and just be. That's what Murray deserves. We're centrally located. We are the heart of the valley. We are primed for it. And we have a downtown that we are looking to revitalize. Now, what is going to attract people from all over? What's going to be different and unique? But maintain the sense of place that Murray has, a historic plaza with shops, eateries, connected to the promenade that Phil and Dave were talking about. That's what we need to keep Murray classic and to bring people in from all over the place to spend their time and money.
All right. Thanks, Clark. So Rosalba, your house backs up to Murray's historic State Street. What are your thoughts on this stuff?
I am historic State Street. Or like Center Street is probably one of the first cities here or streets, I mean. So, you know, sitting here and have done this role in the last few years, I think there's a few things that we really should look at and it should be incentives to those who own historical buildings, whether it be, it comes from the city. I know there's some from the state and really just actively promoting those and really creating a preservation community. And I know this is something that I've jotted around even like in talking to Rachel is, you know, if communities, like if my neighborhood, if we can come together collectively and create like a historical neighborhood, I, let's do it. I mean, I don't have the bandwidth to do it, but I want to support really tangible items that we can really do in the city and with constituents, right? There's, I heard the president talk about like you have tools and a collection of things to use for preserving buildings. I think we should have like a community collection and use or help or some sort of resource. And I know you guys are starting out and the last year you guys have provided so much great information for somebody like myself who's a young homeowner and where we can find that information, right? There's also programs like Neighbor Works that can help give funding to helping rebuild these, rebuild our homes. Now, when it comes to downtown, I totally agree that we should have some more cohesive standards in terms of historical downtown and what that looks like. Not everybody's in agreement with me and I really, that's why I really pushed for the survey because those responses garner support, right? And that to me has been more of a say and more of a push on where we're at now. There's some things that I think collectively we could have done better. But I will say, when it comes to those questions, the promenade, the moving those houses, I've been a part of those conversations and those ideas. And give me a downtown Miami. We could do something that is cool art deco and like ask developers who are coming in, like, maybe you don't, you can't preserve this building for X, Y, and Z, but why can't we have something that is beautiful and aesthetically pleasing versus, and make the theater our anchor in that versus, hey, let's just preserve this building. Let's have a lot bigger conversation.
All right. Thank you. All right. So let's move on to Adam. Adam, what do you think? I mean, District Five, you're not exactly in the historic part of Murray, but you know, you travel there, you shop there, you go to dinner there. And maybe we're looking for more, you know, more options and more things to do in a walkable area or something. What do you think?
Jeff, there's so many things I want to push back on what you just said. As having a master's degree in history, like history is something I care about. Everything is history. Like even if I don't live in that neighborhood, that doesn't mean I'm not part of this, like the history of this place. And it really matters. What we're doing, I think the voters have been pretty clear and the citizens have been pretty clear about what we need to do with historical preservation, especially with downtown Murray. They want something that's charming. They want something that if it's not historical, at least has a historical feel to it. And I think that on the bottom line, we're at this point with the city council where we just need to act on moving forward on city council and quit doing studies and quit doing surveys and just move forward because we know what the citizens want. And let's start working with developers on the land that we own to go forward. I think we need to have a visual standard throughout downtown Murray so that it's unified. Because right now, you look at our visuals right downtown, it's a hodgepodge. You have some modern, you have some historical, you have some contemporary. It's all over the place. And this is what we need. If we want to have a unified place that people want to gather, which is what people want, we need to come up with a better visual standard going forward because right now it's just, it's a mess. And I also think as we're talking about history, we also can have a larger view of preserving and talking about our history as a city. We sometimes get a little narrow and only talk about historical preservation. And I think there's more ways to talk about our history than just that. Like I would love for us to work with like the historical department or even the Historical Foundation and having historical displays along the Jordan River Parkway to talk about our history, having art projects throughout the city that remind people of their history. So historical preservation is one means that we have of remembering history. But there's a lot of ways that we can talk and remember who's come before us and how we've gotten to the place that we are now.
All right, Adam, I really appreciate you calling me on the carpet just then. I do like that. I mean, we, I mean, the reason I'm doing this and we were arranging this and everybody's here is we are all points Murray for the greater good of the whole town of, you know, the island of Salt Lake County is what we have here. And how are we going to preserve our sense of community and all the things that we have grown to love here? So thank you so much, Adam, of putting me in my place right there. So that's super cool. So Gary, what do you think, man?
All good luck.
Love you back.
Well, I appreciate the question. And this is something that I think as you think about the future and the future preservation of historic buildings, you have to look at what we've already done. For this council, we've already preserved many buildings, including the Townsend House, which will continue to be a great piece near City Hall, including the Murray Mansion, including the Armory, including the chapel. So we, and the theater, which we've added additional funding to. And so I think that when you look at the scope of kind of what, where we go in the future, I think you have to say, where have we been? And I think there's a lot of great things to look to and to see opportunities. I love the idea that we've come up with around this, you know, showcase of some of our historic homes and cottages near City Hall and making that a promenade rather than spending a fortune moving one of them, finding a way to incorporate the homes all together and really make it a fun area. I think the most important part in a way, and Jeff, you did say something, as Adam alluded to, you know, we care about history regardless of where we live. And I agree completely with that, but we have to get people down into these historic areas. And the way we do that is by making our downtown somewhere that people want to go to that has the right feel, that historic feel and look that really gets people excited and they want to go down there and have dinner, shop, walk around. And so I think we have to focus on that. And these surveys and these meetings that we're doing are critical. We just have to where people are able to come and look at areas and talk about more of what they wanted. I think we have a lot of information now. It is time for us to move forward and to come up with a plan. But I'm really happy with the amount of time that we've taken to ensure that we take everyone's opinions into account and really get a firm plan hopefully in place that will help us move forward and we can have a downtown in a Murray that we're proud of and honors our history.
We can't hear you, Jeff.
Yeah, you're silent.
It says you're muted, Jeff, just so you know.
It's show business, big people. All right, there we go. So there were a couple of other questions that are germane to the historic thing, but I think a lot of you guys covered that already. So I'm going to jump down to the one that I actually went to a couple of council meetings and brought my popcorn to hear how this would play out. So question number five in our, I think we have 16 questions that are pre-done for those keeping score at home. Yeah, but we're skipping down to five because I want to hear this one. What are your thoughts on Murray's intended demolition of Arlington School, AKA for the folks, the former City Hall, which many citizens wanted to reduce, reuse as a library, a senior center, and Murray's announcement that it will spend $60 million on a new library and senior center? And as your host, I do not know for sure about the, you know, the actual data points there, but we'll let you guys rock on with that one and we'll start again. Are you ready for this one, Paul? Here we go.
Yeah, I guess it seems like I'm number one. I worked for many years with LDO's facilities. And in those facilities, we dealt with issues of older buildings. I'm not talking historic building. I'm talking older buildings that cost sometimes a little bit more to maintain than others. And we set up a standard. And the standard for replacement was that if it costs 75% of the replacement cost to maintain the building, then we would look into replacement. I don't have the numbers of the maintenance cost for the Arlington School, but to me, that building looked great. I question deeply, first of all, our move of the City Hall to the location. And I question why we need to tear that up building. I don't have enough info to have like a strong opinion. But if I did have the numbers, the maintenance numbers, I think I would probably feel better prepared to make a statement that I'm opposed or in favor of that. But right off the top of my head, I questioned it.
All right. Thank you, Paul. All right. Dave, again, land use issues come into play, best use, stuff like that. What do you think?
No, absolutely. Thanks so much for asking that question. I'm a planner, not an engineer. And I do wish I knew a little bit more about the structural integrity, the different aspects of that building. I admit that I don't know all of the information that I feel like I would like to know to make a full decision. But the Arlington School is something that I've heard a lot of people are very passionate about. I've had a lot of people talk to me about that building, about what it means to them, about the history they've had there. I've attended many city council meetings there. And I think it's a really, it's a cornerstone of the community. Absolutely, it is. My impression with things that are going on is that the mayor and the administration have been working very hard to figure out exactly what they want to do with that area, what's going to happen. And I trust our administration. I trust our mayor. I think Mayor Hales is a great leader. I think he works hard and I think he really cares about Murray. If the building does end up getting demolished, something that I would like to see done with it personally is I love the idea of incorporating parts of the old building into a new building to really keep it spirit alive, to keep what people cared about about it, to keep the memories there. I think there's been a great example with the library that was recently built on the old Granite High School. I think they did an awesome job. They have a whole wing dedicated to what Granite High School used to look like. They have yearbooks. They have photos. They have different memorabilia from the school. And there's just this entire wing dedicated to Granite High School, to what it meant for the alumni, to what it meant for the community. And I think they did an awesome job incorporating that into the library. And I'd love to see something like that happen with historic buildings.
All right. Thank you. All right. Clark, what do you think? I mean, I've seen you at the city council meetings before talking about this. What are your thoughts?
You know, the Arlington School could have been a lot of great things right there in the park. It could have been the new library slash senior center. It could have been a community center with meeting spaces, rehearsal spaces, places, incubators for businesses. It could have stayed a community space. And if it stayed a community space, then it wouldn't need to change code. It could have kept the same code. And then it could have been preserved for much, much, much less money. Now, it looks like the city went a direction where the building will not be preserved, but I am an optimist. And even though they haven't told us what it's going to be, I hope that whoever's chosen as the developer may have an open mind to incorporating the Arlington building into their design, whatever that might be. And to sit with Historic Murray first and discuss what the possibilities could be. As far as the library senior center that they're looking at putting at the current senior center location, $60 million is just so much money. And I just think back to when the city was saying that it would cost too much to preserve the Carnegie Library and the historic First Ward Building that was next door. And I just can't help but think, but for a fraction of the $60 million, we could have preserved those historic buildings and made that the new city library and slash senior center right there. Instead of what went there, which was, in my opinion, an inappropriately zoned apartment building with not enough parking and does not fit the neighborhood. And so I would like to see, going forward, the city work with Historic Murray First Foundation and come up with a plan for our historic buildings. Instead of being at opposition, work together to come up with good solutions instead of what happened in the past with the Carnegie Library and other such buildings.
All right. Thank you. All right, Rosalba. Again, that was a hot topic. Still is, obviously. It's a touchy point for people. What are your thoughts?
Well, my first immediate thought is I wish I would have had like the full support of putting into this deal to save it in writing. I think that's something, again, we just need to really look at what, where we can make those changes and how we can get those support. I think that's so important in these conversations that we really haven't had or brought in or really like versed ourselves indirectly of like where these, where this can go. And that being said, you know, I, I, I remember when I first came onto the council of like, things just don't happen that fast. And things don't do this and things don't do that. And I think we've really, like this organization has grown immensely with community support. And I think we're really starting to listen to how and what that means. Is Arlington, will it? I don't really know. And I really hope the developer, whoever it is, like really does keep that in mind, that this is something that we've, we really have as a community and this organization has really like supported and gotten behind. And then I also hear a lot of comments of like, I don't care, that building X, Y, and Z and yada, yada, yada. So I think it's really just garnering what, where and when are we going to put our money? As far as the library goes and the money that it's at, the previous administration had a great opportunity to put them into the park. And they delayed that. And then COVID happened and now everything is exacerbated. And I think this conversation about like the amount it's going to cost, I think it's a great opportunity and we really need to look at our spaces and like what the revenue is going to be and how that smart growth is going to come from and where it's going to come from. And, and I completely wish that we would have put it into this agreement. And I think we, like it was an oversight and I kept pushing it and I, and I, it's what keeps me like thinking about the Arlington and it probably will sit with me. And I will say, when I came back to see the First Ward being dilapidated, we were all in DC and I came back to that and it really broke my heart because that was at the end of my street. And so this is something that is, it's a bigger conversation and we have to have people who are elected that care about this stuff too.
All right. Thank you. Adam, talk to me.
I feel like I'm kind of where, in between where Paul and Clark and David are on this, where there's a degree where I can't comment on like the specific issues of the Arlington. Because I don't know what the structural integrity are. I've heard that there were problems with it. And it was really hard to maintain and preserve. And that was part of the reason that went into it. But I haven't seen costs or anything. And I can't compare it against the current library. I'm with Clark that it's really sad that we lost the chapel and the Carnegie Library because that would have been great places to not only tie us back into American history with the Carnegie Library, but Murray history with the chapel. And it would have been a great community space that we could have used there. But I think what we need to keep in mind is sometimes with historical preservation, we start having the conversation when it's too late in the game. Like we need to, there are some of the things that Arlington, we probably should have had this conversation 20 years ago and started working on the preservation 20 years ago if we really cared about as a community. And so it's identifying the places in the future that we want to go and what we want to preserve. And so we're not coming in at the last second trying to preserve a building that should have, would have been much more cost efficient to preserve years earlier or building a library that's going to end up being more than we could have five years ago. So it's having vision and being able to work going forward for that. I also really appreciate what David said because I think it's what I was talking about earlier with broader views of history. So even if we do end up losing the Arlington, there's ways to still preserve that history and remember what it is through other preservation means. And I think Granite High is a great example of what we can do even if the building isn't salvageable and we can't go forward there.
All right. Thank you. Gary, what do you think?
Yeah, absolutely. So you know, I've learned a lot in my time. This is one of the areas where I would say I've learned the most in the time that I've been on the council in as far as historic building preservation. And so it's kind of the numbers guide. I do want to talk through a couple of things. Number one, on the library and the senior center discussion. There's no decision made on that. In fact, it was not well received when it came with the $60 million prize tag. Now, to put that in perspective, Rosalba, keep me honest, but I believe new City Hall was about $36 million. So that does tell you what inflation has done and what over the period of time. So I do think that that number seems so large now because it is more expensive to build a building. That said, just for starters on the Arlington, one of the things that we are faced with and we agonize and talk significantly about this and what to do here and then whether we should, what different angles we should go at with the Arlington. One of the big discussion points really around it was what were the current issues with it? So a lot of people said, I don't really know. Well, we do know a lot of the issues. There was a major foundational issues due to the earthquake that happened, huge foundational cracks. Now, although not keeping it community doesn't mean you have to necessarily bring it up to standard, you're not going to put people in a building that could fall over. And so, you know, to shore up that foundational issue as well as to fix the sewage problem in the basement of the Arlington, there was an estimate of at least $10 million. Now everyone's like, well, $10 million is not 60. I don't disagree with you on that. But that was just starting. And the reason I say that is we're right now underway in the Murray Theater, which I'm really proud that we saved. But every single turn in the Murray Theater, whether it was opening the floor up and finding out that the Murray Theater was sitting on water. And now they're pumping thousands of gallons of water out from under the theater or opening up walls and finding, you know, the typical, you'd expect knob and tube wiring or different things like that. Every angle and everywhere that they were turning, it was, they were finding issues. And I don't think the use case for the theater is changing. But yeah, you still have to do things in order to make sure that it's safe and, and stable and people can be in it and you're not creating a liability from that perspective. So I just, I like to make sure that we're looking at it holistically. I would have loved to see, I think one of the points made early on was keeping City Hall there. I would have loved to have seen that. I still wonder why we moved it off State Street. I think it was always a showpiece to have on State Street. I don't necessarily understand the point for that. I think there could have been more done to preserve that space had we not moved it. But that was a decision made before, all before our times. And so we're left with this now, and I think that we have to move forward. And the administration is making the ultimate decision and hopefully, we thought we would know by now, hopefully we will hear very soon on what the ultimate decision is.
All right, thanks, Gary. So it's interesting that we are talking a little bit about Historic Murray and the Murray Theater. I just barely actually earlier today completed a one-year task force of being on a developing programming and in the best use of both the the new Murray Theater or, you know, the renovated Murray Theater and also the amphitheater. So I'm going to take a little bit of a license and ask the next question just based on what I just learned with the report that came out and which will be presented to the council, I believe they said sometime in early January, once all you dudes have been sorted out. So anyway, we, in Murray, we have, other than downtown Salt Lake City, we have the most transportation points from all points into our town. We have the only place that the front runner and the tracks meet. We have, I believe, five, at least four or five freeway exits that surround us. And I am personally tired of hearing about people getting on the train from Murray to go see concerts at the Ogden Amphitheater or the Sandy Amphitheater and stuff like that. I would like, and this can be a little bit more of a lightning round, because this is just my personal thing. What do you think about bringing people in from outside of Murray to enjoy events and our restaurant scene or our club scene or whatever draws people into our town rather than, I mean, how many, you know, how many people that are employed at IHC at the mothership hospital there, you know, leave every day? Let's keep some of those people around. So maybe some basic ideas of how do we keep people in town or even draw people from out of town with all that we have to offer? And based on how Paul gave me grief of making him go first every time, I'm going to just move into District Three and again, in alphabetical order. Clark, what do you think? I mean, we spent time on the Arts Advisory Board together. Come on.
We just restored the amphitheater. We're restoring the Historic Murray Theater, and we're going to have these world-class facilities. And we are centrally located. So it'd be a shame not to put on world-class productions that bring people in from all over. We have lots of other spaces that we can do our typical community fair, which we will continue to do and is important. But we really should take this opportunity to anchor an entertainment district adjacent to the historic district around the renovated Murray Theater, which will be so cool when it's done. And that's the, that's the type of thing that you can build an amazing destination downtown around. And I say, let's do it. Let's go for it.
I've been very vocal. I think we should, we have some great opportunities with the new Murray Theater to bring, you know, world-class performers and, you know, I'm not lying when I said this before, but bring Wu-Tang. I'm down with that. And also, you know, being in the business of restaurants and business of like eateries, you have no idea how many business owners live in Murray that take their businesses elsewhere when, and really just want to be able to be here in Murray. So I think it's a, it's kind of a hidden gem, but, you know, they're waiting just as much as we are and we've built a community and there's people that there's, we're going, we don't do our business here in Murray because there's not space. There's not a community of it. And we, we want to come back into Murray. So yeah, that's my answer. Yes. Jeff, we don't hear you.
Excuse me, I'm muted again. Adam, do you want to hang out in downtown Murray a little bit more and hang out with, invite your friends from out of town into Murray for cool stuff?
I think this is exactly why we need to work on what we need to do with downtown Murray. It needs to be a gathering place. It needs to be a place where people want to come and hang out. And I think the theater is a good starting point. There's also Desert Star that's there that brings people down downtown and we need those things. I'd also like to see us do, Holiday has a regular summer concert series where people are gathering around Holiday that's free for the public. I would like to see us do something like that where people are coming to Murray Park. We get some sponsors for it and we're having regular events down there. I think that's building community and arts are a huge part of what we need to do in the future. And I think we could do a lot of public art displays and I could talk your ear off of that for a long time. But I think those are the types of things that we need to build character in our community and show, yeah, it's another way to show Murray pride and show that we are a great community.
All right. Thank you. And what do you think, Gary? I mean, you're family. I've seen it. You guys get out and about. You go do things. So when you want, you were at the Haunted Woods lately and, you know, that was a big deal, but we could do so much more. What do you think?
I agree completely. And I think, you know, I look back to this summer and there was a big concert that was had with David Archuleta and then our, the Bonner family. And it was a real miss that that amphitheater wasn't sold out. Adam and I were both there. I know several other people. Pam was there as well and, and it wasn't sold out and that's just unacceptable to me. We have a Utah star that's in town and doing a show and we didn't sell out our amphitheater. So we got to do more there. We got to focus on, on how we can get more people in and get the word out that we're having these, these great shows. Another thing that I really focused on with the theater, and it's something that I brought up early on when we were looking at, at continuing to walk down the road of restoring the theater is, you know, there was discussion, are we going to show old movies at the theater? And that's what we're going to do every day. And I believe someone commented, we're going to show old Star Wars movies. And if I'm not mistaken, back in two thousand and nine, I think it was in January, Adele performed at the Murray Theater. And that was before she was the Adele we all know now, but still nevertheless, we had an Evening with Adele tour at the Murray Theater. So I think there's a lot to be said to bringing in up and coming artists, big artists. You know, why don't we show a Sundance movie there? Why would we not tell Sundance, hey, we have this great, great location in the center of the valley? It's something that I have brought up and really pushed on because I want to see, we're putting the money into it. I want to see it get used. I want to see it be the showpiece that we all believe it is and will be.
All right, excellent. All right, Paul, you're not first anymore, so you've had time to think about this. So what do you think about a vibrant entertainment center that also surrounds historical buildings and, you know, the revitalization of downtown Murray and bringing peeps from all points in?
Yeah, I totally get it. I think we ought to tear up the tape and broken glass. We'll know when everyone goes downtown. I mean, that's what we want, right? No, I love downtown. I'd love to go to Holiday and walk around downtown. And I don't want to do that anymore. I want to go here. Just down the street. And it's only half a mile from Tri-Front Runner to the theater. Why don't we create a segment where people can walk and enjoy the little park in the drain or to the downtown area and enjoy what we're going to offer to them. Let's expand, create a district. That's what I want to see down there.
All right. Excellent. I like that passion there. David Rogers, when you're not pointing at where Biloxi, Mississippi is behind you, do you like to go out and do stuff? And wouldn't it be cool just to go in downtown Murray? What do you think?
Absolutely, Jeff. You started talking about transportation with this question and I was ready to just hop on it. So when I talked about a little bit of my history with Murray, it's exactly what this is. It's, I came to Murray, visited destinations because this is, this was the place to be. It was an awesome place to come and visit. It sold me. I live here now. I'm so excited to be here. And I absolutely agree with what everyone has said about making downtown Murray a destination. We have a real opportunity. We have tracks and front runner, as was mentioned, the only place besides downtown where tracks and front runner actually interact. We can get people, everyone who takes the rail, the line, they see Murray. People who drive around the valley, they see Murray. Pretty much everyone, if you're going somewhere in Salt Lake County, you're going to go through Murray at some point. So we need to do what we can to capture it. Paul hit it right on that we need to create a district where people will get off the train, they'll get off front runner, they'll get off tracks, and they'll start heading towards downtown with our city hall. They'll find our historic promenade, they'll find restaurants, they'll find a bunch of places they want to do, and they can cap it all off with a, with a show at Murray Theater or the Murray Amphitheater, because Murray Park is right there. And I think we have an incredible opportunity, just geographically, to capture so many people, not just in Salt Lake County, but people taking the front runner down from Ogden, people taking the front runner up from Provo. There are so many people that pass through Murray all of the time. And I think we have an incredible opportunity to take advantage of that and capture those people, bring them here, have them be like, wow, this is a great place to be. I want to eat here. I want to recreate here. I want to enjoy the great shows that we have. And I think we have a ton of potential to do a great job with that.
All right. All right, thanks a lot. I mean, that's, that's a good round of questions and we're at the top of the hour. We have about, we're scheduled for another thirty minutes. We have a question. So Brandon is monitoring our questions, so I will let him ask the question. And we've been also asked, and I will not tell who, but to go in reverse order. And that'll like confuse the crap out of me, but we'll see if I can pull it off. And, and so let's, let's do the question and let's, let's go in reverse order.
You're a Murray boy. You can handle it.
Okay, unmuted. All right, so I have a question that is being asked. It says, what is your personal why for running for a council seat?
Yeah, so if we're going in reverse order, I think I'm leading off.
Yeah, and I wonder who wanted us to go in reverse order?
It must have been Paul. But anyways, my personal why really for me is I want to give back. I want to see my community thrive. I don't do this for personal gain or personal self-interest. I do this because I truly care about the people that I live around and that I see each and every day and that I go to the grocery store with, go to the library with, that are receiving the services from our police and fire. I want to ensure that our community is the best, continues to be the best community in the valley. I talk about Murray as the heart of Salt Lake County and that is my why. I love living here and I want other people to have the same opportunity I've had to live here and for them to be able to have their family here and see the opportunity and growth that I've seen as I've been here.
All right, thanks. And Adam, this is the feel-good love one. So go for it.
No, I just, I love Murray. And as I've been here, as I've associated with more people, I just have really grown to love the people here and love the community. And I want to make sure it's a place for future generations. I make sure we're taking care of what's happening now, but also move forward and make sure that that's something, that we're strong as a community going forward. And so my kids and future kids, future generations can enjoy the Murray that we've enjoyed for a long time and continue to do that going forward.
All right, thank you. All right, Rosalba. Enjoy the softball right now.
Well, the reason, again, it just goes back to I didn't want to be gerrymandered out of my district. I, you know, I really, or out of my house, I should say more personally. You know, it was a very personal thing and, you know, I always have centered my life around like, how does this work? How does that work? Being curious, I, I think I'm a natural in terms of you have questions, I'm, I'm more than happy to like figure it out with you or find out the whys and find the answer that you need. And sometimes it's not the answer we want. And because of that passion, I really do feel personally, I, you know, I understand what it means to go up ahead and, and kind of do the scary thing that you didn't think you were capable of and and then being in that position and now doing the work. I don't take this role lightly. It's not mine to keep. It's not mine to have. And, you know, if there's somebody that's suited for the voice of District Three, then I think that's great. But again, I really do strive in working collectively and figuring out the process along the way.
All right, thanks. So Clark, make everybody feel good right now, okay?
You're all wonderful. Murray's a great place and we all know that because we all live here and you can tell that everyone just wants what's best for Murray. And I think what we're discussing right now is what is that? What is the best long-term for Murray and for future generations? And I just, what makes Murray so special, that special sauce? I want to keep that. I want my kids to grow up here and have that special sauce. And, you know, and I think that involves historic downtown. And I, and I think that that's a really important part of it. And so the more I get involved, the more that protecting the unique sense of place of Murray becomes deeply personal for me. And so that's why I'm involved.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, let's, let's roll into District One. Dave Rogers, when you're not looking at Tampa, Florida behind you, what do you think about Murray?
I mean, we've all said how great of a place Murray is, and I absolutely agree. I think the reason that I wanted to do this was I get excited when I hear other people get excited and share their passions. And talking to Murray residents is a great way to hear about things that people care about, things that they're passionate about and what matters and what's important to them. So I, I feel like I'm here because I have a passion and a skill set with urban and land use and transportation planning. That was something that I'd always been interested, when I was interested in. When I was a kid, I would always look around and be like, oh, they're changing something there. They should either, they should do this thing or, oh, that's, that's not the right thing to be put in there. And, you know, lo and behold, I didn't realize at the time that I could do that as a career. So that's been something awesome. But bringing the excitement and passion that I have about our community, the skills that I have as a planner, as an urban planner, and talking to residents and hearing what gets them excited, what's, what matters to them? Why do they choose to stay in Murray? Why did they come here in the first place? What is it that matters to them? And I think for me, it's hearing people get excited about what matters to them and what they care about and combining that with what I think are my skill set and the excitement that I love getting from other people is what has motivated me to run for office.
All right. Thanks, Dave. All right, Paul, and I don't even know what maps are behind you exactly. It looks like Central America, I think.
I was going to quiz you. You have to give one city here or you're not going forward.
District and the maps. I love it.
Panama. Okay, give up the love and then we're going to have a hard question after this, okay?
My personal why is that I care about our community. When moving here from Washington State, we could have moved anywhere in the valley. In fact, we had a nice little takeout in South Jordan that we liked. It was big, it was spacious, nice yard and everything, nearly just in the block. And then our agent brought us to this house in Murray. When we got here, we got out of the car and we just went, there's something different here. There's a different spirit in Murray. We walked into the house and my wife asked, not because the house was odd while, but because she felt something special in Murray. That was nearly a quarter of a century ago. I know it seems forever. I know all my neighbors, all my neighbors know me. I walk down the street, I can tell you who lives in which house, how long they've been there, the history of the house, which house has their basement flooded last of the rain, which house has the water problem, which house has all the weeds. And we know each other. I talked to my neighbors. I don't have to guess what they think. You drive around my neighborhood. You look, my signs are in people's yard because they know me and trust me. You drive around my neighborhood, you look, my signs are in people's yard because they know me and trust me. If I lose the election, I'll still live here. If I win, I'll definitely be here because this is home and it'll be home forever.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, Paul, because you know, when you lose an election, you get bounced out of Murray, right? No, that's, I'm just joking. Okay. All right. So that was the softball easy round. So we have, we're going to probably close the night with two a little bit harder questions. And I'm curious, and I'd like everybody, this is not like a gushing on question. I'd like you to get to the point of what you do. Like I said, I just got done wrapping up a lot of work with the haunted woods in Murray Park, which, by the way, had record crowds all time ever, and that was super cool and it was a great event, I believe. Other than Murray Fun Days, it's the second largest attended event in the park, especially this year with over 2,000 people every night. But with that said, every night, especially setting up the haunted woods, I was extremely shocked from all the other years of the homeless population living in our park. And and talking to other parks people that are living in all of our parks or, you know, not to quote Saturday Night Live, but, you know, Down by the River and all those things. With a increasing population and our central location and honestly, lack of enforcement of ticketing on our train system currently. Our our population is growing not only, you know, with all the, you know, everybody that, you know, the the kumbaya, everybody we love, but also people that are looking for help. And so talk to me about helping those that do not have roofs over their heads, and we'll go in reverse again. Gary.
Thank you for the question. This is something that is top of mind for all of us. I would say even in District Five, although we're not necessarily seeing it as much in Murray Parks. We have a pretty significant county park there in Wheeler Farm, and it's a real problem that we're that we're facing. And, you know, it, I actually was out there putting some signs up in a neighbor that lives next to Wheeler Farm. And and I happened to talk to a gentleman that was coming down from the motel and I asked him, you know, how are you doing? What's your reason for being out here? Is there anything we can do to help? That sort of thing. And then his answer came down to simply, if this is a place I can afford to be in for the time that I can, I have a job, I'm working, I'm trying to make it, but I'm falling on some hard times and and, you know, and he's seen the area change even from the time that he's been over there and staying. And so we have to find a way, both from a law enforcement perspective, which is what we're addressing as part of our budgets. Currently, we added two new officers. I tried to get three more on the force, but was successfully able to get two when they only asked for one. On top of that, we're still part of the county program that identifies overflow shelters for the winter and and really tries to find a place for for our homeless population to be able to be housed in the really challenging weather, climate times. So I think there's a lot that we're doing and that we'll continue to do. And we have to help in any way that we can. We have to partner with the county and the state to help solve this issue. It can't just be done by Murray on its own.
All right, thanks. Adam, what are your thoughts on, you know, the people that need some help around here?
Yeah, it's a big issue. And I think it's something we need to tackle right off the bat on the council. And when we, the council needs to set the agenda January and February for the year. That's something I want to make sure we're tackling and it's on the agenda because it is a problem. I like what Salt Lake City's, or I should say, I'm intrigued with what Salt Lake City's doing with sanctioned campgrounds and small houses. And they're receiving state funding for that. And so I, they're trying that, they're trying to get that implemented for this winter. So I want to see how that's working. And if it works well, let's see how we can implement it within Murray, working with, if we have to work with other municipalities, the county, do that. We also, as we're planning this, we need to bring in police, fire, health departments to make sure that this is a safe thing for everybody involved for, as we're approaching it, creating places for them, that it's safe for participants, it's safe for neighbors, it's safe for everybody. There, the last thing we want is to create a campground that police don't feel safe going into because of, because of problems. Or and it's not safe for the residents either. So these are things that we need to do and it needs to be addressed at the beginning of the year. This is something we we can't wait on anymore.
All right. Thank you. So Rosalba, you know, we're, you know, we're dead smack in the middle of one of the fastest growing counties in the country. And, you know, with all, you know, the potential with all those folks coming in, you know, there are problems. And how do you help the unsheltered in your mind?
Well, and I've said this before, we need to have some real income-driven developments. I think a part of what we're seeing now with the, with our unsheltered friends is just there's, they're getting faced out of where they're living. They can't afford it. Their jobs have changed. There's so many different reasons why. It's not the lack of they don't want to work. It's the lack of I can't afford to live where I was. And I hear that more and more. So I think we really, like, we can, there's some opportunities, even at the council level, at the county level, if making some end roads with developers and saying, look, you know, mixed income has been successful nationally in other parts of the world, or other parts of the United States, not world. But and how we can do that, and that doesn't mean you have your full development is going to be, you know, ostracized or not work well because you have mixed income levels and different people living in one location. No, it's been very successful. And when we talk about mixed use development, we need to include the conversation of mixed income. The other thing too is, you know, we have one shelter. I think we can totally do more. I think the state is now dictating what cities can do. I know Salt Lake proposed their sanctioned camp and they were denied by the state. So it's not like we can just now venture out on our own. We have now been, the state has to get involved and their commission has to get involved with what that looks like, which is unfortunate. But I would love to see some funding to go to our unsheltered friends. It's a need. It's, I've seen it directly myself in providing some small gifts and and money from my own fundraising of efforts to families. And we have a lot of single-family moms and dads that live in Murray that could use help. And or they're one, like I've heard, I just heard this week, I am one month away from being homeless myself. And that's not an easy thing to hear from somebody in your district, but it happens and it's there.
Yes, it is there. And what do you think, Clark? It's there and it, you know, some people like to like, you know, we're going to have great productions at the theater and we, let's all go and hang out at the crack shack at Fashion Place Mall. But no, those are groovy things. But what about, you know, the other problems of an expanding population of all types?
I'm there for the crack shack. Let me know when. I love a good chicken sandwich. A lot of thoughts come to mind. The Smelter RDA site has around $6 million that it needs to spend on either improving the district or affordable income initiatives. So we could look at using some of that money for affordable housing initiatives in the city. As is already done, some of that money has been put towards neighbor works and down payment assistance programs for getting people into a into a home purchase. Affordable housing, keeping people in housing is very important, of paramount importance. Because once somebody becomes unhoused, it's much harder to get them rehoused than to keep them in housing from the onset. So one thing is existing housing is always more affordable than newly built housing. So upgrading existing housing that is affordable is the best way to keep it affordable. We have affordable housing in our historic district above the Harker Building currently. And I would hate to lose affordable housing there. Also, with all this very high demand for new development of new complexes, if we're going to allow another high-density complex in Murray, we should consider making it so that any new developments require 25% of their housing to be affordable. While we're at it, let's make sure that 25% is green space. Yeah, that may lessen demand, but demand is so high right now. We can afford to do that and we need the affordable housing. We don't just need more housing in Utah. We need more affordable housing in Utah. And most of these apartments that get built right now, they're way more expensive than what's currently on the market. So it's not helping.
Yeah, yeah, affordable housing is a big deal. So David, what do you think on this topic? With an expanding population is expanding issues, so.
No, absolutely. I think this is an incredibly important topic and I really appreciate the question being asked about it. I work for the county and in that role, I've seen what the importance of collaboration, the importance of working together. Jeff, you mentioned earlier Murray's geographic location. People are able to get to Murray. People have many options to get to Murray. And so that means there are people who are here and who are coming here. And we have the opportunity to work as a council, as an administration, as a city, to work with other jurisdictions, to work with the state. I really do think it's a collaboration issue that's going to, or it's a collaboration solution that's going to help us, help us solve this issue. Working with other jurisdictions, seeing what's been successful. Salt Lake City has already been brought up. Mill Creek had a shelter last year. Looking at what has been done elsewhere, how we can incorporate those things in Murray as we work with other jurisdictions to share the load. Because these are people who, as you said, they they're struggling. They they may have some issues that they've been working through. They may have fallen on hard times. There are so many different reasons why someone may find themselves in that issue. And they deserve to be treated with respect. They deserve to be given as much help as we can possibly do. And it's not going to be just one, one solution, one answer, one jurisdiction that's going to solve it. It's going to be us working together to help a very important part of our population.
Thank you, Dave. Paul, what are your thoughts?
Thank you. Not all homeless are equal. I believe that Murray residents who are mostly homeless are our number one priority. Transit homeless should be a lower priority list and that should be more of a county-wide issue. So we need to address, first of all, our Murray residents who lose their housing, especially when they have children. They deserve immediate help. I, my wife's a substitute teacher and she has children who like, were living in a car, were living in a minivan. Those families should not.
Where did this last question come from? Seems a little antagonistic.
Did I go mute?
You did for a second.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what happened. Anyway, those families with children should be helped right away. Transit homeless, let's work with the county. Let's work with the state. That's my thought.
All right. Thank you. Just wrapping up. Sorry to interrupt you there. You know what? Live television, stuff like that, live streaming. And I have one more question, then we're going to actually jump to Rachel to remind us of the mission of the Murray Historical Foundation and to thank you guys and and close our show. This has just been such a pleasure to have you here. But our our final question is, I'll jump down to, and it's it's about, and I'm going to do lightning round. I'm just not even going to like highlight each one of you. It's like the point, do you guys understand in being elected to be, and I'm kind of paraphrasing a little bit, being elected to the city council, that you are there to serve the will of your constituents and not vote in lockstep with the administration, et cetera? And actually, I would even like couple that question with how, when we voted for things in the state, that they kind of discount, you know, the will of the people. So let's like compact that into, are you here for the Murray peeps and and the will of the people in in your districts and what they want? And also to maintain the level of community identity and lifestyle that we've grown to love for decades and decades. And we'll go back in reverse again. Gary, what do you think? Lightning round?
I'll be very quick on this. So first and foremost, my duty and my responsibility is to my constituents in District Five. After that, I recognize that I'm one-fifth of the council vote, so I'm responsible and to all of the voters in Murray in the end. And I take that very, very seriously. I do not vote in lockstep with the administration. There's a lot of issues we go back and forth on. And I will continue to push that and continue to be an independent thinker. And that is what I bring because I'm the only person that has my kind of background on the council. And I bring that every single time to the discussion and to the issues.
All right. Thank you. Adam?
I, it's collaboration. I think it's listening to citizens. It's working with everybody. I think there's more common ground than we sometimes believe. And I think it's working together with everybody to find that common ground and move forward going on projects.
All right. Thank you. Rosalba?
I will say probably historically, I've been the one that's dissented the most, and so I'm not really in lockstep with the administration. I, you know, I agree to disagree, but we have a great working relationship and I think that's important. You know, and when it comes to constituents, I hear all sides and a lot of times that puts me in a really hard space. And I welcome anybody and everybody to run for office because, and do this role because it's not an easy feat. And with that said, you know, I I will continue to kind of push back where I feel like we need to push back and I'm okay with that.
Clark?
I'd like to see us bring in citizens at the exploration phase, anything that we're considering as a city. Sometimes it feels like citizens are brought in at the very last minute to do a really small comment when the decision's all but been made. It may not be that way, but it certainly feels that way sometimes. So I want citizens to feel like they have a stake at the table. And we have tools these days that allow us to get, to communicate with everybody en masse. So being able to get everyone's feedback in real time before important decisions are made, so we see what the citizens want and not just what I think as one person on the council. I feel like the citizens of Murray are qualified to help us decide what to do with the important decisions that we're facing and we have the tools to do it.
All right. David?
Thanks, Jeff. I know my area of expertise and I also am very keenly aware of where I do not have an area of expertise. And I know that the residents of Murray have long history here. They have things that are passionate, that they are passionate about, things that are important to them that I don't know about and that I want to listen to and I want to hear. I take public service incredibly seriously. This is a really important obligation. We're working with public money. We're working with public trust and it's important to listen to residents as we move forward and make decisions. District One's such a cool place. Our district has a lot of single-family homes, but it also has fire clay, which is a little bit higher density than some of other parts of Murray. And balancing the needs of all of our residents, and those needs can be quite different sometimes. But working to cover a large group of people is is such a cool opportunity. I've loved being on the council for the past two months. It's been such a, such a neat opportunity. And I want to work to gain people, to, I want to work to listen to residents of all all over the district and really work to to support what they want and bring their passions forward.
Thanks, Dave. Paul?
I've listened to the people in my district for 23 years now. I understand them. And we're not always going to agree 100%. That's the reality of it. I got 52% of the votes in primary, which means that 48% voted against me. So I'm going to do my best to represent the most number of people in my district. Like Ronald Roriga said, he said, the person who agrees with me 80% of the time is my friend, not a 20% emeny. And that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to just reach out to the most people, understand them and represent them.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, with that said, I mean, look at you guys. You know what? I can safely say that this is a extremely quality group to choose from, you know? In elections that we might have on the federal level, it's a battle of who sucks less. of who sucks less. And here we have quality people who care about our town. And I, I really appreciate that. And when we end the stream, I'd appreciate if everybody stays on for a little feedback and thank yous and stuff. But always, this is a pleasure for me to host the, the forward progress of the town that I've lived in my entire life, and I love. And, and just, it's such wonderful, wonderful folks to maintain and, and move forward, yet also try to maintain some of our, the values and the, you know, our, our community lifestyle that we, that makes us unique, that makes everybody want to be here, here in Murray. And, and I really appreciate that. And also, of course, I have to thank Jen Kiechel-Winn and Kay Real Estate for the facilities that we broadcast from. Also, if, if I can point backwards, there we go. I'd also invite everybody tuning in. We also record the Give Back Cast from here, which profiles a top interesting people of the 104 charities that Kay Real Estate and Give Back and Connect represent. So get on YouTube and subscribe to that. We have another episode coming out in a couple of days. And, you know what? And then I need to, even though it doesn't look like he's here, I need to say hi to my partner in crime today, Brandon.
Thank you, guys. And yeah, I, thank you, Jeff. It's been great. I can't, I'm looking forward to meeting all of you guys in person as well. But I think that we should actually turn it over to Rachel.
All right. Well, let's, again, I'm doing production and talking at the same. Rachel, thanks for putting this together. You want to like send us out in quality? Go.
Yes. So kind of like went, went out the opposite way, the way we came in. I, I really appreciate all of you for making time in your busy campaign schedule to do this tonight. We're doing this as a service to the community, and hope that you will be able to share the links out to your constituents, so that they can see your answers, and that they can view this in the context of the entire group of campaigners. And this will help you all. I, I have so much respect for people who run political campaigns, because it is not for the faint of hearts, and not for the weak of spirit. It's not for people who don't really want to work at 150%. And I've, I've seen that from, from all of you. And really honored to be able to provide this platform, and super thankful for Jeff and Brandon for putting all of this together and doing all of the technical work. Jeff's kind of like our Murray, you know, treasured individual who's our, our Murray DJ. He, he does all of these things, and he shows up, and he's the spirit and, and the fun, and gets people involved. And so we're super grateful for, for Jeff, and very grateful for our new president, Brandon. He has not shied away from any of the things that we've asked him to do, and it was kind of like dipping his feet in the fire from the very beginning, because he's only been our president for about a month. But we're, we're very lucky that he's here. So please, if you are watching this with us now, or if you're gonna be seeing this at a later time, we would love it if you would donate to our foundation. We're 100% nonprofit. None of us are paid. We just do this many times from our own pockets. So any foundation, our donations we can get from our community will help us to continue to advocate for historic preservation in Murray. Also, a final point is, when I, I'm, I'm the community advocate wing of our foundation, and I will say that one of the things that people get worried about is that we're going and asking our local government for, to commit tax dollars to our preservation pet projects. And I can 100% guarantee you that I have never had a meeting with the mayor or any of the council members where I've ever said, please, throw, you know, taxpayer money, throw the public purse behind this. Our only intention is to make historic preservation a priority from the point, standpoint of our, our elected representatives. And that's, that's been a difficult struggle, I will say. And so I'm hoping that this will continue to be part of the conversation with the candidates, and that this will be top of mind with whoever wins at the end of the month. Best of luck to all, and we thank you all for being here tonight.
All right. And with that, we'll, we'll call it good. And thanks for everybody for hanging out. And I would appreciate as many of yous can just to hang out after we, we close the stream, because that's when all the good conversation happens. Anyway, thanks everybody for hanging out, and until next time.